Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the November 3, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Bashir Tash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This Commission provides the opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of requests, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When the applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Oh, I will just make note that if you're requesting, and Ms. King may be helping with, this is to make a general comment, if you're wishing to pull it, an item for consideration, that will come at a different time. Is that?
That's correct.
Oh. The question should be handled through pulling item, or should it be?
Well, if it's a public statement, this is your opportunity to speak. So if it's on the agenda, you can speak at this moment and pull it. If it's not on the agenda, then we have a separate section for that.
Yeah, I wasn't. Not consent session?
Okay. Then you can speak. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. You're embodying the perfect opportunity for the somewhat confusing agenda item, so thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, and thanks for being here and for donating your time for this purpose. My name's Gary Bray. I live at 5724 Halter Court. It's the old subdivision commonly known as cattle king, way out on the east side. And our concern is about a proposed subdivision that's an extension of time, I think, for, it's on track map 64, 65. But here's my question. It's, they're proposing a negative deck, negative declaration on the time extension for this subdivision. Does that mean the whole process, the whole project is going to be on a, have a negative declaration in terms of SEQA, or just the extension of time? That's my question, because this has already been extended one time, and I wrote a letter back in 90, I don't know when it was, 2002, 2003 year, four years ago, whenever it was, first time, and now it's being extended again, and I'm concerned about the traffic. If you've ever been out there from 178 into Hart Park, then you know that the soccer park is there, there's one, two, three subdivisions there, Lake Ming is there, Calm is there. All this has been since the first, first thing was approved and back in 2004, been a lot of changes. To have a negative deck on it seems like unreasonable, just like to consider maybe even a stoplight or make that road wider, because it's pretty dangerous. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
Thank you for your statements. I will ask, I will clarify and correct if I'm wrong. For us to answer questions and discuss, this would need to be moved into a public hearing? Public statement time is really just for a statement?
That's correct, but Mr. Johnson wishes to address the question, though.
Okay, if that.
Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, extensions and time are not considered a project, therefore, although there was a mitigated neg deck done for the original track map, the extension of time is exempt under Section 15060(c)(3) of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines and Statutes.
Understand. Does that mean the entire project is exempt from SEQA?
If you would like to answer.
Not, the entire project is still subject to the original mitigated neg deck, however, this extension of time request is exempt from SEQA.
Okay, understand. But so then the rest of the project is subject to SEQA?
It's subject to the approved environmental document that was prepared previously, yes. That's correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your public statements. Yes, now we know what it's there for, and I still think it is a little bit confusing, but, but thank you. We appreciate your participation in the process. Okay, so much so that I've lost my place. I apologize.
So non-agenda public statements?
Non-agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Thank you. This is now a time for public statements on items not listed on tonight's agenda? Are there any members of the audience wishing to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said item unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent, consent items?
Well, I could make a motion to approve a consent calendar item for a approval of minutes from the October 20, 2022 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Wade. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
And Commissioner Bashir Tash as well.
And Commissioner Bashir Tash abstaining as well.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearings. Please note, if an item is not removed by a commissioner, or staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comments. Please note, if an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for separate Seeing no members of the audience, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
I would, if I could. Chair Kater, note that Item 5F, there was a memorandum prepared to continue this to December 1.
Thank you. Seeing no items wishing to be removed, at this time, the consent public hearing items 5A through 5F are now closed. May I get a staff, may I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on consent public hearing items 5A through 5F incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Bashir Tash, may I have a second?
I just had a question, I'm sorry. I just want to know why we're continuing that item, did some, and why, did something change? What changed?
We're continuing that item so we can wait on council to consider the actual project.
Does the motion still stand? Commissioner Neal would?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Wade. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, There Are No Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, Workshops.
Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with the workshop item?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Rick Anthony. He's our Wreckin' Parks Director for the city, and he'll be giving tonight's workshop.
Thank you for having me, Commissioners. I am joined today also with Fidel Gonzalez, who heads up our Construction and Facilities Planning Division of our department. We're certainly excited to give you an update today, and then I will preface that as a very brief update. We will be having a more in-depth update for the council on November 16, when our consultant is here in person. So I've cut down about 45 slides to 18, and I'll work through them rather quickly here. What you see here is the plan and the major components of the plan. A lot of these, even though it is an update, as you can see, it's kind of a very hefty update. A lot of these other components, which I'll get into a little more detail through this slide presentation, but a lot of these have really come to the forefront during our initial phase, and we were fortunate enough to have the opportunity to expand on this update, to really discuss and to entertain some very important elements and issues that were important to the residents of the city. A part of it is MLK revitalization, the Kaiser Sports Complex, the urban and central city tree plan, Kern River Parkway Study, and McAllister Ranch. Our timeline right now, we're just a little behind, but we started off in Phase 1, that was last year, with the evaluation and condition assessment. We did a condition, assessment of all of our facilities and evaluated all of our parks and amenities. We also completed a major part of the public engagement, which did include some recent engagement surrounding MLK and Kaiser. So we actually just completed that last week. So we're right in the middle of, we're kind of ending Phase 2 and moving into Phase 3. Like I said, even though we're a little behind, we still hope to have a draft to council and adopted by summer of next year. Just an example of some of our major facilities and the age of them, this was produced by MIG. The next slide is the level of service that has already been identified, and what's significant about this slide is even if we include the park acreages of north of the river, Park District, and the County of Kern, you can see we still are in the lower percentile of a city our size in terms of park acreage to residents. Another slide that really shows you, the circles with the yellow, yellow infill are really showing you areas that don't have accessible, walking accessible or biking accessible parks. So we kind of have a desert there, a park desert. We do have some undeveloped land in those areas, but we're a little bit ways away in terms of identifying the funding and prioritizing which parks will be complete. So I'll jump right into one of the major components, MLK. We were able to get enough support for a complete revitalization of this park, both, both from past engagements prior to me taking this post, and just the, just the outpouring of community responses that really wanted us to do something. And normally, when you engage on a master plan, you kind of put a hold on prioritizing projects, but like I said, we had support from the council and the city manager's office that we're actually doing kind of a dual streamlined approach. We're doing the master plan, at the same time, we're moving toward this priority for MLK. So where we are now, we finished our recent public engagements, which introduced these three alternatives that I'll share with you today. And in fact, yesterday, based on all of that engagement, we kind of landed on a compromise, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But this is from kind of a scale from the large wish list, and this is more speaking of arts and cultural marketplace theme for the park. The next one is more of a sports focus and wellness hub. And then finally, kind of a in-kind replacement of what's currently there. And to back up a little bit, the reason why you see the community center kind of out there on California Avenue is we were successful in purchasing that corner lot from the county. So that corner lot is now part of this planning effort. Based on all of the engagement, and this is something that we'll be presenting to council to kind of get the next direction, we ended up with the combination of the first iteration and the sports. So kind of a medium-sized facility that does have several sports amenities, but does not lose the event space, the amphitheater, those things are very important to that community. Here, we're talking about Kaiser, and I need to make it clear, this is just a exercise in a public engagement in terms of future conceptions. There's no funds that's being dedicated to this, there's no design, but based on, which I think you all are familiar, based on the recent change of the commercial property, turning two smaller lots into one larger to attract a little bit more of a commercial entity there, we had to kind of redesign the park, and so we kind of took this opportunity to go back out to the community. Certainly, that community has changed both in population and diversity, and we really want to see kind of what they would like to see this reimagined space. And that's all that this exercise will include. When the master plan is complete, it will determine what priority or if this project moves forward in terms of starting the design. Just a little bit on our central tree plan, years ago, there was an effort that really didn't materialize to really try to bring some uniformity both into the species and the shape part of the tree in downtown. So because our department handles a lot of that area when it turned, in terms of tree pruning and designing, again, we decided to use this opportunity to really talk about how we want it downtown to look in the future, both bringing some uniformity into the trees that we have there, but also understanding that the climate has changed significantly, and we need to be able to transition to a more drier climate in terms of our palette for trees. Hopefully, what comes out of that is a better, healthier tree canopy, also potentially an ordinance that will kind of unify and uniform downtown Bakersfield. Kern River Parkway Study, again, a lot of feedback from the community about the significance of our natural areas and the fact that we were dealing with many challenges there, both from encampments and vandalism and litter. So this is a component of the plan that's going to discuss all of these issues and, and hopefully bring a, a management plan back to Department of Recreation and Parks. Now, we do share responsibility with the Water Department, so our hopes that we can provide some restoration and some management that will be indicative to those environmentally sensitive areas versus kind of what we've done now. A big part of, of this effort is because we do have rangers patrolling a little bit now, they're just starting in the next month, and we hope to be able to protect and preserve some of those assets and improvements out there. And again, some other examples of what we're doing there in regards to the Parkway. A little bit of the public feedback already, there's just a couple of slides that we already borrowed out from MIG, but you can see the priorities is, is safety was a big one, and we've already addressed that early on, like I said, by bringing the ranger program onboard, reducing litter and illegal dumping. And then there was a heavy priority in terms of replacing and repairing some of our older amenities and conditions. Communities gave us an example of what they currently participate in, and also what they would like to participate in in the future. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any Commissioners have any questions?
I'll take next.
Good. Commissioner Lomas.
It's probably pushing 30 years ago, there was a study done on establishing this Metropolitan Maintenance District. Has that been addressed or looked at?
That has not been addressed, but the, there is a component on the master plan that will make certain recommendations, and we are looking at, at both the way we currently conduct business, and then the potential to have a more sustainable plan moving forward.
I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Coman.
Thank you. Great, great presentation. Thank you very much. Can you give us a quick update on where we're at with the Park Ranger Program?
Yeah, sure. We have onboarded 16 Park Rangers. We were actually very pleased, and be quite honest, surprised at the level of professionalism that we were able to bring onboard. A lot of our rangers have more than 15, 20 years of law enforcement. Many of them came from Kern County Sheriff and Detentions. Where we are now is they've been through several rounds of training, they've been immersed with all of the resources, both by the city and county, in terms of the efforts that we've already made toward homelessness. They're doing ride-alongs with BPD, they're doing ride-alongs with code enforcement, and they're getting just really a real good base for when we're ready to patrol. And we are doing some light patrols. The issue that's holding us up now is that we haven't gotten all our equipment in. So we're waiting on vehicles, we're waiting on tough books, and we're also waiting on vest. And so right now, we're just still evolving. We do plan to have a go-live date in December, and we're probably going to do a press release and some really good PR in terms of just having the rangers out in the parks stationed out there. You can go meet your ranger day on a Saturday, and we pass out candy or cookies or water and that sort of thing, just to have a, a very positive impact on the community. And then we'll do probably a little more heavy enforcement in the beginning of the year.
I didn't realize that we were, I guess you probably didn't either, when, when we posted these positions, that you were going to get former law enforcement officers, and I know this particular opening are unarmed rangers, and are, are you going to have a difficulty with former officers not carrying firearms?
No, I think that most of them, again, came from detention, so other, when they're inside of those, those, those walls, they are not carrying weapons. What, what was really unique is that a lot of these individuals are highly trained in the verbal de-escalation skills. They understand mental illness very well, and they're dealing with that population probably on a more severe level. So I'm very comfortable when they're out in the field. We will discuss evolving the program and to give them all of the tools that they need to be able to defend themselves, and one thing that has been discussed is moving them toward tasers, which we currently don't have, but they're all very comfortable with their role. And the good thing is that BPD supports our program 100%. They've already made those connections and relationship. They understand that we're going to take a lot off of their plate when it comes to crimes of nuisance and that sort of thing, and they'll be ready to respond if it's, a situation escalates where there will, really will need to be some, some focused law enforcement efforts.
Thank you. It kind of got me off the track of the questions I was going to ask, but thank you for sharing that. On the feedback for the Kern River Parkway, has there been any talk about acquiring additional parcel of land around the, the river to be able to preserve that, and, and is there any money out there for that?
Yeah, I think the Water Department has identified certain parcels, and the city manager's office have discussed it. We have not made, in terms of our department, we have had a lot of contact with that. We do hope that the master plan will identify those opportunities as well as kind of discuss the best practice for us to manage that asset.
Okay. I only have two more questions. The next question was, it's all, it's in the same vein about, you, you showed us quickly a slide that had some circles on there where there was a shortage of parks. I think that's what you were trying to present.
Right, it's kind of a park desert.
It has a little circle that, with that one. So is it your, is it your suggestion that we need to find ways to put parks in these areas?
Yeah, that, that is part of the solution. A big part of it is that we do have undeveloped land, and unfortunately, we've really gotten behind in terms of providing that funding to build the parks. A lot of different factors. Some of the funds were spent on some of our major complexes, like the Kaiser Sports Complex and Mesa Marin, but also we haven't increased fees in a very long time. So as you know, the cost to build a park has escalated tremendously in these last year to months, but we haven't kept up with that, so we find ourselves really lagging behind. And again, MIG will be making some realistic recommendations on how we're able to at least get parks built where we have those deserts, and then we're always in the business of exploring other opportunities as well.
Okay, thank you. Last question, I promise. And I, I've asked this question, I've never really got a straight answer from anybody, but back in the days when we had a redevelopment agency, I guess we have one now, but in the old redevelopment agency, we did a Mill Creek project downtown. And part of that included some street improvements that included planners and that kind of thing along 19th Street and some other areas there, that have pretty much been abandoned. And I'm not really clear on who's responsible for, you know, planting those and maintaining those. I've had public work sales, it's not them, it's parks, and maybe you could help me on that. You know what I'm referring to?
Maybe not the specific area. I can maybe get to that. Generally, we do take care of quite a bit of streetscapes. We don't take care of commercial streetscapes. So if it's residential, if it's green, usually it's our Wreckin' Parks staff that are maintaining that area.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Sorry, Commissioner Wade is, and then Commissioner Neal after that.
That'll be quick. McAllister Ranch. What's the vision?
So I didn't touch on that, and, and it is going to be part of the, the bigger update. Simply with McAllister Ranch, I believe the city has come to an agreement, it's not city-owned property, but I believe there's a compromise, and again, VD may know more about where they are in that, but simply the city manager has asked that there be some sort of public access or recreation amenity allowed, and so the thought or the vision right now would be some trails, whether it be natural trails or bicycle trails. So the ma, the master plan is simply going to recognize that in the plan so that future funding or future priorities, when they're identified, we can say, hey, it was part, you know, of that particular plan.
It seems like an opportunity. From what I know, I think it's, it's used for water banking, is that right? Yeah, so private owner has no use for the surface, might as well do something with it. Another thing, I don't know who McAllister is, I'm pretty sure that was just a commercial name that was picked to make the community sound attractive. Let's not roll with that name if, if we do something with it, please.
Noted.
Let the eminent state. Commissioner Neal.
Hi. Nice to meet you. I just wanted to say that I love seeing the presentation, I would love to see a more full presentation on MLK Park. full presentation on MLK Park. That park is very important staple for the community in that area. I actually learned how to swim at MLK in the summer program there, so I know that programming, your design, the concept is beautiful. There's a lot of crime that happens there, too. I know you have rangers that are going to, I'm sure you'll be sending some there, but I just wanted to know more about the programming for future plan for that park. I actually, it was one of my first jobs, too, in high school, I did the WEA program, and I got paid to work at that park. And both of my baby sisters learned to swim there, too. So anyways, I wanted to just know more about the programming, or will the programming for that park be revitalized? I know that that's low on the priority list on, just generally, but since that project is already going to be one of the first ones you do.
Well, first, I want to invite you to the council meeting when it's time to ask for funding for that park, so you can be an advocate. But absolutely, actually, the programming is a priority, and that's part of us developing some of the concepts, is that we want to do more, we know there's a demand there. And there's a perception there, right? Like, we can't deny that, and we're, our intent is to really change the culture there. The city is investing a lot, even around the surrounding areas. I believe this is going to be a catalyst for revitalizing that area. So when the park is, you know, we're ready for construction, we're going to sweep that park, it's going to go into construction, we're going to have rangers there immediately, and we think we're going to get a brand-new park and a brand-new culture out there that not just the community will be proud of, but the entire city will be proud of. And programs are going to be a big component of that as well.
I guess I meant to say I'd be delighted to do that.
Okay. That's on the record, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Neil. Are there any other commissioner comments before?
I just want to say one more thing. I want to thank Commissioner Neil for pointing that out, because MLK Park has been a stain on the city. I went by there, you know, before Councilman Arias was elected, and I was horrified, you know, how decayed that had become. So I'm really glad to see that your department is getting some synergy behind doing something significant in that park. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And I'll go to that meeting, too.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you, commissioners. I think one of the things I appreciate about having the opportunity to be chair is my list of one question became about eight questions, so I apologize. But I just want to, first of all, just resoundingly say thank you. I think parks and recs, parks provide our city an opportunity for community engagement, for people to come together, people to learn new skills, people to learn, meet their neighbors. I think in a world that's largely becoming more and more privatized, I think it remains one of the great democratic spaces where we can learn from each other. And so it's very inspiring to see us take a proactive step to reimagine that, revision that. So thank you for the presentation, and I agree, I look forward to the longer presentation. Feel free to bring as many slides as you want, you know, I'll eat before, you know, go all night, yeah. My first question, though, is really about, I thought it was interesting perspective, the acreage deficiency that we see, you know, being kind of lowly acreed relative to other cities of our similar size and stature. And I was just curious, this is a combination parks and rec and planning conversation, is how that, that fact is making its way into the general plan as we look at space allocation and land use within the city?
Chair Cader, I can comment on that. This plan is going to be intricate part of our general plan update. It'll be an element within our general plan that we can reference, and we will have goals and policies on how we go forward to make sure that there is enough park space dedicated, at least future dedications for park space. Similarly, with school districts, make sure there's enough land and everything for school districts, because they also comment. But it will be, we'll work closely together, there is no question, as we are currently.
Yeah, I think our consultants have already touched base with each other.
That's correct.
A couple of times.
Fantastic. And then I think, you know, Commissioner Wade kind of touched on, I think, one aspect. If you, if we go back to the presentation, actually, it's still up there. I think one thing this map, I don't know if the two are connected, is I think this map to me says that we largely have a neighborhood park approach to how we see recreation and open space in our city. You know, we kind of have one natural corridor that we've highlighted traditionally as a city, which is the Kern River Parkway. And I was just curious if, I think McAllister Ranch becomes a good opportunity because giving citizens beyond one corridor an opportunity to connect with kind of natural Bakersfield and the natural environment, you know, more passive landscapes that are more native in their plantings. And I was just curious if the open space trail kind of passive parks are being looked at as far as a strategy for, for future parks within the city?
There, you know, and I appreciate that question, because there are, there is a trend where a lot of even the neighborhood parks are trying to add that component, whether it be pollinating gardens, just leaving areas natural, and then having some interpretation on why this area is natural. Largely, our neighborhood parks are kind of cookie cutter, but I do think that there is some opportunities to expand on that effort, just the way you said. MLK has that concept right around the community gardens. They're talking about putting some natural areas, some pollinators, some butterflies, and really telling that story well as well.
That's great. I think that's great. And I also think, you know, I just, like, linkages to me are really important. I think, you know, as people train for marathons, they ride bikes, you know, this idea of, I know a lot of communities in California have really implemented trails plans and open space as part of how they do kind of low-density development. And I think we've, we kind of have that in the Northeast, largely because the topography doesn't allow you to develop houses on certain terrain, but, so I'd be curious if that was ever a component that the city as a whole would think about. Like, I know we have the Freiant-Kern bike path, which starts to suggest that Kern River Parkway is a great example of it, but was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're limited to just focus on our current amenities and within the city, but I think the plan will at least identify. We had the consultants out at the Panorama Vista Preserve, so that's another connection that we can make, and I think they were using some of their methodologies to preserve and to educate what's out there, and maybe that can be transformed in what we reimagine San Miguel, which is right next to it. So there is a little bit of synergy, but the connectivity part would probably have to happen on maybe a larger effort.
And I would note also, this also includes public works. They receive a lot of grant money for some of the bike path extensions and such, and they are looking at that interconnectivity also. So it is, it's a citywide look.
Great, thank you. And then, sorry, I still have a few more.
It's okay.
Because I did not, these are the ones I did not have before my other commissioners. So thank you. One is, so we've had some conversation tonight about regional versus neighborhood parks, you know, investing in sports villages and complexes versus neighborhoods and communities. Where do you see parks going in the city of Bakersfield? Or is it an all-of-the-above?
Yeah, and that's a great question. I think that's our struggle that we've had in the past, is that it's always been kind of an either-or, and it really needs to be an "and" both. We really have to make sure that we're maintaining a lot of the parks on the east side, the parks that are aging. We really have to make sure that we're developing new parks. As you see, the city is growing, and our population is growing, and we have development everywhere. We can't just leave these people out with no parks for 10, 15, 20 years. We have one person that is yelling at us almost on a weekly basis about, you told me that this park was going to get done, and my kids are grown, and our only answer is, well, we can hope for your grandkids. So, I mean, and that's sad, but that's the reality. So we have to have a more sustainable practice. Sports Complex are great, they certainly add to the economy, there's a place for them, but we have to have a balance, and I'm hoping that this is what this master plan is going to accomplish. Whether we get support in terms of the funding that we need to do that is, remains to be seen, but we will have that, that path forward in writing.
And then my last was just an observation. So I live in downtown, downtown is kind of my, my boundary, and I've noticed, I think one thing I've noticed is some of the park designations are pretty static, you know, minimum lot size, minimum sizes, minimum amenities. And I was just wondering if in the master plan, things like pocket parks or regional parks that fall without the definition of what a park is in the city could be embraced and?
That is being discussed. Councilman Gonzalez has actually brought it up, and there is a trend as well in terms of urban park, urban park greening, converting unused space, whether it be a parking lot or a commercial building that's outlived itself, and they want to turn it into an urban park. I'm all in favor for that. I think there's a great value in doing that, both for the environment and for the residents that are starting to populate a lot more in downtown. So we just, we will look for those opportunities, and I do think the master plan will speak to that.
Fantastic. Well, thank you so much for the presentation, and then I just want to give a nod to Construction Division, Fidel.
Yes.
Jastro Park, the new playground, my daughters are obsessed, it's one of their probably top five places on the planet right now. So the tangible improvements to, not just the new parks, but also the old parks is greatly appreciated. Thank you for the presentation. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 8, Communications.
Does any staff have communication items?
Yes, I would just like to recognize that these department directors are very busy, so it's, I'm grateful that they can take time out and come and speak with, with your commission and members of the public that remain. You've heard Chris Boyle speak several times, and there's some new people on the commission. So what I do have in front of you is our Development Services organizational chart. There's a printed copy there, just to kind of give you an idea, when Chris, Mr. Boyle comes and speaks, you know, who he's speaking from and what point of view. So he is our Development Services Director, and we have 103 positions under Development Services. And Development Services, or DS, is divided into Planning Division and Building Division. Building Division, a little bit further divided with the code enforcement and then the building. Within the Building Division, there are 81 employees. Within Planning Division, we have 18 employees. We currently have three vacancies, which is an improvement just over five months ago where we had six vacancies. We do recently had the opportunity to fill a Assistant Planning Director position. And again, some of you may remember Jim Egert from previous times, he was our previous assistant, or our last Assistant Planning Director, and it has not been filled since, so we are happy that we did get to fill that. That will allow me to focus some of my areas on some longer-range planning instead of some of the, some of the smaller items that I'm dealing with now, just to make sure that development projects are moving ahead. We did promote internally that Ms. Gail, Cassandra Gail, you've met her several times, and you may see her more important role here with, with your commission. Within the Planning Division, we do, we are broken up into Advanced Planning, Land Division, and Current Planning. Advanced Planning, again, we have Jenny Ing, you know her, and she does a lot of the track maps, parcel maps and such, or, excuse me, that's Land Division. Advanced Planning is vacant, that's where Cassandra Gail was, and she does the general plan amendments and zone changes. And then we have Current Planning, and we just promoted a new principal planner there, Tony Hockes, and you'll be seeing more of him, and he's going to do the conditional use permits that come forward, and there's quite a few of those coming, and then the PCD plans and PUD plans. So that's where we're at. We are looking for those that do visit the Development Services Department. Right now, you'll see that planning is split between the first floor and the second floor. Our first floor is where our public assistance is with our current planning. We're going to bring that to the second floor, so we have all the planners together, kind of have a pool of planners that we can choose from instead of being siloed. This will allow them to get a broader breadth of experience and, you know, be more marketable, because we do want everybody to improve and, and be where they're happy and move on if that's what it takes. One more thing on the Planning Department, we currently have under 11-month fellowship program. We have an individual, Ethan, he's with us, and some of you, Daniel Cader, you may have dealt with him. He's, he's under a fellowship program, like I mentioned, and what we're trying to do is see if he likes planning, and so we're going to have him do a bunch of things, but right now, he's dealing with site plan reviews and different development like that. So we're excited to have him onboard, and hopefully, he's excited to be with us. But I just kind of wanted to give you a quick overview of DS Department, where we're at, and if you have any questions on that, please let me know. Otherwise, we, our next meeting we're looking at is December 1st, will be our next Planning Commission meeting. And with that, that is all the comments I have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 9, Commission Comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 10, Adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:15.